We're alive, folks.
Aren't we?
All right, it's time, folks. Before we get started, I'd like to invite Pastor Travis Hensley to open us in prayer tonight.
I'm gonna keep this short, I am at supper tonight. That's right. Dear Lord, in the name of Jesus Christ, we're so thankful, God, for bringing us together one more time. We're so thankful for all the many blessings that you've given us. And Lord, we're so thankful for this wonderful place that you've given us to raise our family. And we pray that you would lead and guide this council and direct them in your paths, in your ways, and do the will of the people. We pray and ask all these things in the name above every name, the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, chair notes to the quorum is present and want to bring this meeting to order, this special meeting of the Marshall County Council Thursday, September 26. As is our practice, we would welcome public comment on any items that are on the agenda for this evening. Because we have only 55 minutes until the planning commission meeting, we do want to keep this short, and so we will hold folks to the three-minute rule. The only item on the agenda this evening is the request of the Board of Zoning Appeals for funding for advertising and legal related to Tamarack Solar's requested project in Union Township. So, does anyone wish to address the council on this agenda item? All right, please, please come to the front. And actually, anybody who does, who would like to address the council, if you could line up over there on that side, and then when that line is exhausted, we'll be done with public comment. If you could please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Scott Calontine, 3190 Cottonwood Lane, Bremen, Indiana. I'm just here today to speak in favor of the project, anything that would help with the advertising, moving forward with it. I work in the constructions trades and the construction industry. I think it is a very good potential for local workers, trade workers of every kind, operators, electricians, carpenters, laborers. And I think it's a great career pathway for students looking to get in the construction industry these days. We talk about that in our communities and creating jobs. Our trades are doing these jobs in San Pierre at Dunn's Bridge Mammoth Solar. We have projects coming in the port, some in Goshen in the spring, and currently one in Logan's Port, Indiana. I ask that you keep in mind the massive industrial projects that are going on in the county to the north of you. They are going to be pulling a lot of energy from the grid. That, in my mind, creates a potential for increased utility costs to the people of this community, and it's a real thing that we all may face, so. There's other industries that create power, coal, natural gas, wind, nuclear. I believe this to be a clean source of energy. I believe it gives the ground time to rest and the time that that's there. If it's done properly with the community and with the legislators, I think it can be a positive asset, and it may help keep all of our utility bills down and create career opportunities for the citizens of this community, which will reinvest their dollars here locally. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ma'am? And again, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Kim Ryder. I'm a landowner at 14218 Tulip Road, Culver. It's just short. I just wanted to say, you know, the Invenergy solar application was filed under the original Marshall County solar ordinance, and it met the requirements of that ordinance. It also now meets the requirements of the revision that went into effect by default after the application had already been submitted. I'm here today to just say that I'm asking you to please move the Tamarack solar project forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, I'm Ed Ryder. We own the property at 14218 Tulip Road. Anyways, I wanted to submit it in the record that our, the attorney that's representing the landowners that entered into agreements with Invenergy submitted a letter to the attorneys of the county, and I just wanted to make sure that you guys were all aware of that. I'm gonna read a few things out of here, and it was also submitted to Ty Adley. This is with respect to the proposed solar project to the Marshall County Council. The landowners have learned that the county council is considering a plan to defund certain county government bodies in a blatant attempt to block the Invenergy solar project from receiving fair public hearing, a fair public hearing. As voluntary participants in the project and supporters of renewable energy and private property rights, the landowners request that the county council stop interfering with the planning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals efforts to carry out the Marshall County zoning ordinance. County council must stop its attempt to end around the county's valid zoning ordinances for at least four different reasons. One, the landowners have relied on the existing county ordinances and have a vested interest in the project being considered under the law currently in existence. Two, the county council has no land use or zoning authority under Indiana code. The project will be a benefit to Marshall County. The project will not create any food shortages. She also goes into great deal on some legal precedent in this letter that was submitted to the attorneys. In conclusion, landowners request that the county council follow the law. The council must not defund any zoning commission or board, and the council should not attempt to bar a public hearing on the project. The landowners anticipate supporting the project when it is finally granted a public hearing before the Board of Zoning Appeals. Do not hesitate to contact me with any questions. I look forward to working with the county to bring this exciting project to Marshall County. It will provide clean energy and increased income for the landowners and the county at large. Sincerely, Brianna J. Schroder. Anyways, I just want to make sure that you guys are all aware of our legal representation, that we want to see this project move forward.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? And hearing none, Mr. Adley.
You're the counsel?
Yep, the floor is yours, sir.
Just simply here to request the funding here under guidance of you, Mr. President, to come before the council as a whole, request said funding.
Yeah, the reason that we're here tonight is approximately two weeks ago, Mr. Adley contacted me under the approval regime that we had established and had requested that I approve several projects out of the council budget, most of which I approved. My understanding, however, was that the council did not empower me to approve items that might be controversial, and I thought this would be controversial, so I wanted to get the approval of the full council on this. I just, I've got a question for you, wanted to clear up some misconceptions that have been out there in the community. Did the council defund your department?
Has it been defunded? No.
Okay. So, we've been providing additional appropriations for you beyond what your original budget was, right?
Right, through additional procedures, but yeah.
Yep. And how many projects that you've requested be funded have been rejected?
There have been none rejected to date.
Okay, so just for clarification for everybody out there, we've provided additional funding, we've not defunded the planning department, and we have not rejected any of their requests, so. Does the council have any questions for Mr. Adley?
Ty, you had submitted a request for additional legal. I didn't see it, and I know you didn't see it, Mr. Chairman, correct?
As far as?
For the BZA, whatever the request that he?
There was a request for, to allow him to spend on legal and advertising as it relates to the Tamarack solar project, is that correct?
Correct.
Through the BZA or through planning?
Through the BZA.
So, you're asking for more legal expense and some advertisement expense, is that correct?
Correct. There's a legal request, and then there's the advertising request.
How much is the legal request?
The legal request wasn't a dollar figure.
Are you?
None of them have been dollar figures.
Are you aware that you still have over $1,300 in your legal budget?
I am.
Okay.
All of our expenses have come out of the planning commission fund thus far.
Well, in the BZA, you still have $1,348. So, on top of that, do you have a number that you're looking for? I'm just?
No, we've, in the entire time since June of this year, there've been zero-dollar figures, correct, Mr. President? There's not been a dollar figure requested from our department in any of the requests.
That's correct, yeah. Most of them were nickel-and-dime type expenses, though, right? I mean, I don't think anything was over $50.
They've all been associated with the advertisement.
Right.
Or the authorization to take certain cases to court, which have expenses in themselves through the legal process.
And I guess, I think it's a fair question. What do you expect to expend on this? You know, if we were just to say yes, is it gonna be $5,000, $10,000?
It'd be, the intent, so, the request is for the authorization of consulting for BZA procedural matters, as well as consultation on the solar application itself, to go through and review and make sure our attorney is up to date on the request, so they're understanding what's being requested at that meeting, as well as for them to be able to attend the meeting. So, is the meeting going to be one meeting, two meetings, three meetings? I couldn't tell you what that's going to look like. It'll be one of the largest meetings in the last six years that the BZA will end up undertaking. So, it'll be more expensive than any meeting we've ever had in recent past.
Okay.
But to be able to give you a dollar figure in an estimated hour, it all depends on how long those meetings go. If you have one meeting that lasts six hours, you're looking at six hours' worth of legal fees associated with that, not including prep. But if it lasts three meetings at six hours apiece, then you're looking at 18 hours' worth of billables that are associated with that project. So, without knowing what that public process is going to look like, I couldn't tell you what the estimate would be.
Okay. Just a question. I know that Invenergy Tamarack Solar has paid a fee to the county, and that's probably gonna be one of the biggest points of contention, is that because they've paid the fee, some will say that we owe them a hearing. How much did they pay?
It was close to $3,000.
$3,000, okay. So, if we expend more than $3,000 on this project, then the taxpayers would be subsidizing their request, is that correct?
Correct. And that's a big part of the reason why all of our fees were amended at the end of '23, first of '24, was to make sure that we're doing our part to make sure that the fees that are associated with projects, building permits, and variances requests are all being covered by the applicant and nothing to do with the property owners.
Okay. Any additional questions, Mr. Patterson?
I guess kind of your question is, is we're looking for the ceiling for your request, right?
I'm looking for a dollar amount. I mean, I'm not interested in approving a blank check, so, I mean, I guess Mr. Bahannon got a request that was unclear, and so I'm seeing $1,348 in your BZA legal line item that you could spend. If the energy company already paid an application fee, that could go toward advertisement, could it not?
We try to keep things out of the correct line item. We don't try to slide things from one unit to the other.
Okay.
Because that's how our budgets should work.
Yeah, in any case, if they were gonna advertise, he's gonna need additional money from the general fund somewhere, because it doesn't automatically go back into his funds, so we would either need to do an additional appropriation into his department or pay it out of the council line items, so.
Okay.
What's the dollar amount you're asking for print and advertising?
Print and advertising, we haven't got it quoted from the pilot at this point.
Do you have a ballpark?
I bet you would ballpark this one case at about $150.
For one case?
I would hope it would be less, because that advertisement's for two things, one for a meeting and one for a hearing. And so, that's where our budget has been zapped in '24 is because of that duplication in terms of word count. And so, because of that, that's where your budget's going faster. And so, with this being a much larger case, you've got a lot more advertising in it, because there's 47 parcels within the county jurisdiction. And so, when you advertise all of those, you're not, call it six lines, is usually the longest one we usually have. This'll be a couple paragraphs in length, and so that's where a lot of your cost is gonna come in play for that advertising.
Yeah, as you bring up the parcels that this project includes, I've seen the map of those parcels that are proposed to be a part of this project, and from my understanding, several of those parcels fall within the two-mile jurisdiction of the town of Culver, which currently has a solar moratorium. What is the proposal to deal with that discrepancy? In my mind, I think the proper remedy for that would be to reject this application and ask them to submit a new one that does not include territory within Culver's two-mile zone.
We simply wouldn't be advertising those three parcels. So, out of 50 parcels, three of them are within the two-mile region, and so we would only be advertising the 47 parcels, and those were all a part of that request document that we provided to you.
I'm just wondering why those were a part of the application submitted to the county at all?
It's usually for context, to understand where that total project is.
Okay.
Were those numbers added into the total numbers that we were given in this book? The 1,400 and whatever it was acre?
1,400 and change in the 400 and panel? I believe it would be, yes.
So, then we're gonna need clarification on that, correct?
It would be advisable, yes.
Any additional questions from the council?
Typically, Ty, when they make the application and they pay those fees, a certain percentage of that is for advertising anyway, correct?
Correct, it's enveloped into that, yes.
Yeah. So, would you say that covers 80 or 90 or 100% of what that normally costs, or is that totally transferred over to them, or we subsidize that?
The, so, the way that the solar applications are charged is a $200 or $2,500 flat fee for that, just because of the scale of the project and the review time associated with that. And then you have the, I'm gonna say there's a dollar per panel acre that goes into that, and a lot of that's to help subsidize the advertising because of the size of the project. So, the bigger the project, the more advertising you're doing, more impact in relationship to parcels adjacent. If you've got 10 acres, that's a significantly smaller project and would have less advertising adjacent to it. Whereas you have a 2,000 or 3,000-acre project, then you're taking and you're spending that across more and more acreage, and so you're gonna have more impacted adjacent homeowners, and that's where the additional advertisements come into play.
The moment we have these applications and we're to this point, it's not like this just started yesterday, okay? Just for discussion's sake, this has been a while that this has been going on, and we have these projects that are in the works, okay? So, as they've made these applications, and they've paid these fees, and they've paid for their advertising, I would want the county to be well-protected as far as any legal fees that are out there. So, I think we would need a number, Ty, to try to, you know, even if you come up with something that's close to that, we need something to protect Marshall County also, and it's fair to everybody involved, so. As long as the advertising fees that are coming in with the applications are close to what they would be, I can understand if it's a little short, because you've got staff working on that, but you know, the legal part of that, it's, to me, it's very important to have the attorney there, because we want the attorneys representing the county in the best light we can. Am I missing something?
I'd just like to piggyback off that. I think what's missing from this context is the dollar amount that you're requesting, because I see the 3,000 coming in, but I think kind of like what you guys are saying, a blanket check, if it'd be 30,000 or 50,000 that we come back next month that we have in bills.
Yeah.
Is that reasonable to say?
Yeah.
And that's understood. I know Commissioner Klotz is here, and I know from what I've understood, there's something to do with paying legal fees out of the EDA. I don't know if he might be able to speak a portion to that or not.
EEA?
EDA, Economic Development Agreement.
Okay.
That was signed last Monday.
Ooh, I'd love to talk on that.
Yeah.
I haven't read it or anything on those lines, it's something I've heard or understood, but I don't know if that has an association.
I've read it several times, and I have a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions, and I want to say thank you, Mr. Klotz, for not signing this piece of garbage. It's, I have so many questions. I would love to sit down with Invenergy and ask them some good questions, but one of them that I'm really concerned about is on page five, it says, notwithstanding and foregoing with prior written notice to the county, but without the need or consent of the county owner, which is Invenergy, may assign or transfer this agreement in whole or in part or any or all of its rights, interests, and obligations under this agreement to a public utility or any other company or any other entity, provided in the latter instance that such a signee shall have demonstrated experience in constructing and operating an energy generation project in the United States and a net worth of a minimum of $25 million, as confirmed by audited financial statements as of the most recent fiscal year. So, my concern is that, this is just one of the many concerns, that Invenergy can then turn and release this back to a public utility or become a public utility. And if that happens, what happens to our property taxes? Will they be paying property taxes? Utilities can be eminent domain. Will our constituents lose their land? I know in Madison County, there's lawsuits going on right now, because Invenergy filed to the IEDC, and there's a currently going on. There's lawsuits going on in Kansas with Invenergy as well, and other states, because they're trying to file to become a utility. And once they become that utility, it opens up a whole different aspect for our county. Our county loses the authority, because now it's under state and federal laws. So, we lose all rights to any authority, and all of our ordinances mean nothing to them if they get that utility status. And that means they can either file for it on their own, which is what they've done in Madison County, or they can sell out to NIPSCO or another utility company.
And I will echo those concerns, Mrs. Cox. I think the perception has been that the council has been mainly concerned with the rights of the adjacent landowners, but in a lot of ways, I think that we're looking out for the long-term interests of the property owners who are considering leasing their property to Invenergy, because if they were to become or sell out to a public utility, the prospects of them having their land seized by eminent domain and never seeing a fulfillment of the contracts that they expect to see fulfilled, it's a real possibility.
And it's a real possibility that we're, we could lose all those tax dollars as well. And my other question is, as far as property values, there's no, absolutely no guarantee of property values, and when they come in and they switch, so, the assessed value of the project can get a reset, and that's what it's stating in here, several different sales, resales, lease backs, and other legal transactions. And this means that with each sale and depreciation, the assessed value is lowered. So, in writing, I would like Invenergy to put in writing and make the promise that regardless of the public utility status and regardless of the many sales of the project it could potentially receive, because it's all spelled out in here, they can sell it to whoever they want. They're starting out as an LLC, and they can make as many sales as they want. I want to see a guarantee that the lower assessed values, would you put in writing in a promise and a guarantee that our county will receive our tax dollars? I haven't even heard what they're promising. They've never, I don't even know what they're telling us they're gonna, what we're gonna receive. And I don't know, this is all about tax dollars. Why was this not brought in front of the county council? I don't know. I don't know why we don't have to review this. I pulled this and it was shared with me after the commissioners' meeting, and I'm just appalled. It has put, this contract is horrible, and it has put our county in a very, very difficult situation. And one of the commissioners, two commissioners signed it, and one of them has a conflict of interest. So, in my personal opinion, I feel like that this is null and void. But there is a section in here that does say, payment of county expenses, owner shall pay the cost of the professional fees incurred by the county for the payment of the county's reasonable legal, financial advisory, and other expenses related to the negotiation, execution, and implementation of this agreement, the decommissioning agreement, the road use agreement, which isn't done yet, the resolutions and other documentation necessary to approve the agreements related zoning and permit authorizations and other actions of the county in connection where they're within.
Mr. Libin, you've read the Economic Development Agreement. Does it give you any assurance that the expenses incurred in this process would be reimbursed to the county?
I mean, it calls for them to pay reasonable expenses. I don't know what that means. Once again, there's no dollar numbers, there's no figures. I mean, everything was negotiated through the commissioners. We didn't get a chance to review. I mean, as you know, I had serious concerns about the decommissioning agreement. I spoke at a public meeting to the commissioners, asked for a copy of the agreement before it was submitted for signature, asked for review so we could make comments on it. I was not afforded that opportunity, they did not provide the agreement. They just signed it. I mean, there's lots of concerns, and there are no assurances, there's no dollar amounts, I have no idea what they would or would not actually pay. You'd have to ask Mr. Clevinger.
And obviously, those were not discussions that Mr. Adley was a participant to, but those are some of the concerns that we have. Any additional questions from the council?
From my point of view, what I'm saying is the only assurance that we have is that there's a $3,000 application fee, is that, is in our purview, is that correct? That is dedicated for this from that fee.
What's the legal requirement, Mr. Lovett, when they pay the application going forward?
There's no requirement for us to give additional funding for the legal. We do have to fund the advertising.
We have to fund what?
The advertising.
Okay.
So, you can go forward with petition.
And so, was that $2,500 separate? And so was that twenty-five hundred dollars separated? When you were talking, there was five hundred for advertisement, twenty-five hundred for legal, or how was that? I, I don't remember what you were talking about with the application being divided.
The...
With the three thousand dollar fee.
The fee itself is set at a flat twenty-five hundred, and then to set it so that it's fair in relationship to the scale of the project, there's a dollar per panel acre fee.
But is that all for advertising, or is that for legal and advertising, or how is that?
It would encompass all costs to hear that project.
I will say, one, one of my other concerns, Ty, is that, uh, we might be getting the card before the horse a little bit. As I read, um, the, uh, the ordinance that, that regulates this process, I see it, one, two, three, four different spots in here. It, it does say that before this goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals, it must pass the Technical Review Committee. Can you tell me what that process looks like?
It must pass or must be reviewed by?
It says it must be approved by.
And we could take another look at it.
Did you, you pointed that light...
Number two, "Technical Review Committee Site Plan Approval is Required for the Medium-Scale, Large-Scale, and Farm-Scale Solar Energy Systems Prior to the Building Permit Approval."
Correct. They're in for a special use permit, not a building permit. So that'd be two different permits.
So it would be required for a building permit, but not for a special use permit?
Correct. No variance is required to go before the TRC.
Why is it under solar energy systems?
Within Article Six, Section Two Ten, which I believe is solar energy systems, it must be reviewed by the Technical Review Committee.
Right. It's in our, it's in our ordinance development.
Correct.
So could you explain to us what, what is the difference between a...
Special use and a building permit?
Special use permit and a building permit.
So special use is a application of the border zoning appeals.
Okay.
Like a conditional use, if you wanna think about it that way. It has to receive additional approval from a quasi-judicial board, which is the border zoning appeals. A building permit is what is required prior to construction.
So they would have to go through two separate steps? They'd have to get a special use permit and then come back for a building permit?
Correct.
Okay.
So if you wanted to build a home workshop to build widgets at your property, under county ordinance for the A-one district, that's a special use. You would have to get special use approval from the border zoning appeals, and you would have to turn around and get a building permit in order to construct, construct that structure.
Okay. And so for this project, they would need both of those, right?
Correct.
Okay.
There's no shovels in the ground to build said facility until such time that they have both the special use approval and the building permit.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions from the council?
Would you like me to ballpark the legal fees?
We'd like to put a cap on it, yeah.
I think the three thousand would be, uh, I mean, that's what we took in for it. That's kinda what I was getting there with, that I think it's reasonable to start there.
And that if it was to go beyond that, the applicant would need to pony up, is that...
I don't know. That might be something we need, uh, discuss with the other agreements or something.
This goes back to Mr. Clevinger. I mean, the agreement the commissioner signs says it'll pay the reasonable expenses, so it would be reasonable for the commissioners to go back to the applicant and request additional funds for the fees.
I saw the applicant and attendants. Would you like to have them make comment or commitment?
I'd be happy to hear from them, yes.
It was a yes. That was a yes.
Okay.
So, so Ty?
Sure.
They're talking three thousand. What are you realistically thinking?
I mean, if you do three thousand, you're looking at about twenty hours, at a hundred and fifty an hour?
Yeah, I, what is the, what is their attorney charge? I didn't know. Is it a hundred and fifty?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember what that number is.
I think, I think that's right.
It's a hundred and fifty or a hundred and seventy-five, I believe.
And then we meet again in two weeks?
We definitely need an attorney there, I can tell you that.
Right.
But I don't think that our, I don't think our taxpayers should have to pay for someone's project, I think.
Yeah.
According to this, they should have to pay for it.
Ethan, did you wanna speak to that?
Should I come up?
Come on up. And if you could give your, uh, name and title for the record, please, and we've got about twenty minutes.
Hey, Council, um, Ethan Sternberg. I'm here representing the Tamarack Solar Project. My address is One South Whacker, Chicago, Illinois. I guess just to be clear, the Economic Development Agreement did, um, allow for us to reimburse the county for any costs incurred in association with this application. So I know that we have submitted an application fee. If there are additional costs beyond that, those are costs that Invenergy has committed. We don't want the county to be coming out of pocket for the project that we're proposing in this community. So we are happy to be, you know, funding that, and, um, you know, I know tonight it seems that the basic question in front of you guys is funding for the public notice, and we request that the council allow for that, um, so that our project can continue to move forward.
So would it be fair for us to consider a, a motion up to three thousand dollars, and then if it needs to, to come back, they would...
Yeah, I think this, in my opinion, we have a couple of weeks, but if we funded the exact cost of the application, that, that would be reasonable, and then maybe we can work out those details legally with our representation.
And I would, and I would say if, if, if Ty saw that going beyond there and would want to receive some additional funds from Invenergy, once those funds are received, then we could pay those out of the council budget without additional, without having an additional, uh, meeting.
I would say in my likelihood, I would like to see that dollar number, because what's reasonable to one person is not reasonable to another. If I tell my daughter she can, you know, spend a reasonable amount of money at a grocery store, she's gonna buy cartload of candy. You know, I just like to know what, what we're looking at.
An attorney fee at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour is probably one of the most reasonable I've heard lately. I'd be surprised if it's that price.
I actually, I think it, it is under two hundred dollars an hour what they've been paying, if I remember right.
They've got a great deal then.
Well, I would think that the fee application would get them through the next couple of weeks before we meet. I don't, I don't know, but...
Mr. Lovett, can we get some, can I get some advice from you? I mean, you're saying that we're obligated statutorily to at least pay for the advertisement based on their application, correct?
Correct.
What about the legal? I mean, we take in an application fee. Isn't that reasonable to assume some of that application fees goes to the county just for general government cost, you know?
It's a reasonable assumption, but it's not a legal requirement. I, I think that if you would like to apply the three thousand dollars to advertising and legal, that's, that's absolutely reasonable.
To advertising and legal, is that what you said? But we're, we're obligated under law, you believe, for advertisement, not legal?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I will, I will say, just before, I think we're, we're getting to the point where we're gonna be heading to a vote here pretty soon. I just wanna clarify for, um, Invenergy, for the folks in the planning department, that the reason that we are here and we're having this debate and this prolonged process is that I personally, and I think a number of other folks on this council, believe that this process has been deeply flawed. I am very concerned, um, that, uh, the attorney for the planning commission and, and whoever makes the decision about what constitutes a conflict of interest are deeply misguided. I'm, I'm gonna call out names. Commissioner Overmeyer has a conflict. The, the assertion that his battery project is unrelated to this solar project is absurd. It's my understanding that, uh, Mr. Klein also has voted on these ordinances and was participating in this process while he was employed by a company that was actively soliciting solar contracts in this county. And I hope that that will be factored in, um, when, uh, when this goes before the BZA. I am deeply disturbed that, uh, against all of the public comment that was received, against the protest of this council, that the commissioners continued to move forward with this project. And I wish that there was more that we could do to stop it. I promised people that I would do everything within our power to shut this process down, and I'm, I'm being advised by our council that there's not a lot we can do. So I wanna make sure that we operate within the law, um, but I also do want it to be heard, um, that if, if somebody out there, if it's the Attorney General or, or somebody looks into this, because I believe that, uh, that the people of Marshall County are not being served by this process.
And so in that aspect, we are following the law, which the law states that we have to do what exactly, fund advertising?
I mean, you got three thousand dollars in the application, the total application, right? And you could ask Mr. Radley for a breakdown, what the staff time is, what his offices has expended in resources, and you could get a total amount that the county's actually spent and anticipate spending on this petition, and then go back to Mr. Radley if that is above the three thousand dollars, and ask for the additional money so that, once again, as the representative said, they're happy to fund that, right? I mean, I don't know. I don't know if he spent two minutes on it. I don't know if this meeting was the total extent of his involvement, or if they've spent, you know, sixty hours on it, a hundred hours, sixteen hundred hours. The cost to the county is drastically different depending on that. So, and we're kinda shooting in the dark. I know what we've got, what we've received in, I do not know what the cost to the county has been.
So are you looking to get funding as soon as possible?
The funding would be in relationship to that hearing, correct?
Start the advertising process and, I mean, the legal.
Right, 'cause I can't advertise to the public adjacent until there's funding in existence to notify all the neighbors of the project, 'cause I can't schedule the hearing until the first domino falls.
So, and, and I'm not a lawyer, but in my thought process, the money that came in to be spent on the project, if you capped it at that until we had further clarification, the county wouldn't be out any money until that would change. And we meet again in a couple of weeks if there would be new information or agreements or dollar caps or whatever else would, would happen between now and then. This is me thinking out loud here, but... But even if that, I mean, we don't know if that's enough to cover that or not, basically is where we sit here, right?
So are we, are we actually transferring money tonight, or just showing support one way or the other?
There won't be a transfer if, if we, um, we have money within the council budget still on that line of the, what, what is the balance in that? Do you happen to have those numbers, what we've got in the council budget?
Oh, it's probably, it, I mean, I'm sure we have a thousand dollars. I'll look at it real quick.
I'm gonna add real quick while you're looking up. We stated in another council meeting, we've already as a county have spent a lot of money for solar, laying out solar with our county, um, attorney. He's charged us and billed us a lot, um, that is specifically for solar, and we've gone above and beyond for our planning commission, um, as well. So we're looking at what we've been moving forward. I think we've spent over ten thousand dollars already, um, of taxpayers' dollars leading the way and paving the path for, for solar.
I wouldn't say we spent it.
No, we didn't. No. The commissioners have spent that, 'cause it was through the commissioner.
So with that agreement, are those expenses covered going forward, or adjust this application now, or, I mean, there's a lot of, let's see, murky ground without having specific dollar figures is how I see it in my head.
Yeah, I would suggest if there's any motions tonight, to make those in a specific dollar amount. That would be my recommendation.
One other question, Ty. When you send out the advertising, so people have the right to remonstrance against that, correct?
They have a right to be heard, good, bad, otherwise, whatever they wish to say, they're able to have that in that public hearing.
Yeah, tho- those BZA meetings, I'm sure are gonna be fun.
They'll be extensive, and that's where, what that timeframe or how long that's gonna take, I couldn't tell you. There's times where different planning commissions and BZAs will move the meeting to a bigger location in anticipation of a large crowd in attendance, and they'll have less than what they standardly have for different meetings. Or they won't move it, and it's packed to the gills, and you're talking about fire code at that point with occupation issues. And so we're looking to move it to be able to accommodate as many people as humanly possible to have their ability to be heard.
Does that mean facility rental?
There'll be a small facility rental fee, and that's a part of the reason why that fee is higher in significance over a standard special use cost. I think standard special use is two fifty or two seventy-five, and it's ten times greater.
Do you have an expectation about what venue that might be?
The Plymouth High School is what we've been in conversations with.
The auditorium or the gym or...
It has been idolized to use the auditorium, but the longer we wait to make that advertisement, the more you get into the holiday season, where you've got several different shows and choral and band events and different aspects that take precedent because it's school-based, and we're coming into their facility, so we've gotta fit into their schedule. And so that's where, trying to find that balance of when can it be heard, or where do we need to, uh, adjust location to.
Does that facility have, um, are we able to video and audio things as a public...
That's what we're coordinating with their IT departments for. It may not be the exact aspect that we have here at the county building, but we're trying to capture as many of those different facets that we have, uh, today.
So as the advertising goes out, that's published, do you also do like the adjoining neighbors, like within three hundred feet of the property?
Three hundred feet and two property ownerships is what's under statute. And we usually go a little bit above that.
I know this is a hypothetical thing. Are you aware of any that have been denied as a result of a neighbor remonstrating against it?
Yes, absolutely. We've had denials, and we've had reductions in sizes.
So the adjoining neighbors would have a say-so for that?
Yeah.
And that's the public process.
All right.
Just in my head, this looks like it's gonna be a large dollar amount for more than the three thousand dollar application fee.
As, as, as much I, as much as I was hoping to spare the, uh, BZA from having to make this decision, I, I do believe it is ultimately gonna fall to them. Is there a motion?
Before we do the motion, what would you like? What are the numbers?
If you wanna ballpark it, um, we've got thirteen hundred in the budget currently for BZA legal fees outside of the advertising. I'd recommend going with the two thousand dollar, uh, upfront aspect, that way we're able to cover as much of those fees as humanly possible, and try to keep it within that aspect. So then you're looking at twenty hours, more or less, uh, in consultation with legal fees and being able to make sure any facility fees, uh, are coordinated and taken care of under that application aspect. Then I'd recommend, uh, council writing some sort of commitment with Invenergy, and making sure that those additional costs over and above that are, um, acquired through Invenergy to offset county costs so that the taxpayer itself is not burdened with that. And with that first application having come in, um, suggesting to the planning commission to look at what that cost was and adjusting said legal fees for both, uh, solar and wind aspects, to make those adjustments, just to make sure that should any application ever come in again, that those fees are adjusted accordingly. You do your best in the beginning to establish where do you think that ballpark number is gonna land, but ultimately, until you have that first, first application, you're not gonna know how many meetings it's gonna take, how many hours it's gonna take in relationship to that project.
Is there any kind of clause in that application, or if it goes beyond a certain amount that they are held? I'm trying to, I'm still stuck on that dollar amount, where they would have to cover said fees, or, this is probably one of the first projects it's, I'm guessing, ever gone over that application fee this large. I mean, minus, you know, if you spend fifty dollars for a little...
Before we used to lose money from time to time on, uh, variance of development standards or special uses, and that's what drove a lot of those, uh, fee adjustments in twenty-three, when we made those revisions initially. we made those revisions initially, as well as the building permit fees.
So that might be
While those were adjusted in January 1.
To build into your fee process, I guess, if
And so we actually did a calculation breakdown on what's the estimated timeframe for review, office time, all those sorts of things, estimated cost in relationship to average case count per meeting, because you're also paying five members in, five members of the board in attendance at 75 bucks a meeting, so you're trying to account for that cost. Majority of the time, you don't have an attorney cost, and so you try to factor that into these larger cases, and so that's kind of where that 2,500 number begins to come into play. And you want to make sure that they're accounting for their advertising requirements as well, and that's where the dollar figure per acre comes into play. So the bigger the project, the more letters, the more money they're paying in relationship to that. And so
Is it only for 500 acres then? Is that why, it's only, it's a dollar per acre, so is that 500 acres, the 2,500 plus the 500?
Right, it's 400 and change, but yeah.
So this whole project is only based off 400 or 500 acres?
It's based on panel acres.
Panel acres, okay.
There's about 3,000 under lease, 1,400 in fence, and 400 within panel acre.
Does that again include the ones that are in the two-mile zone?
Yes.
So that is not the exact size of the
County portion.
Right.
Is there objection to any debate?
First of all, we're going to have to defer to the people in charge of the Plan Commission and the BZA to come up with what those numbers need to be as far as any application fee getting higher or lower, because that's going to be their function. There's no way we should try to micromanage those people. Faces are changing, things are going to change, and we need to give credit where credit is due. So I think they need to worry about that, because that's in, that's their skill set, okay? And if I'm listening to Ty properly here, you're saying in that one legal fee that's the BZA, the balance is 1,300? You're wanting to bring that legal up to what number, Ty?
3,300, I was requesting the
And the $2,000?
Correct.
Okay, and then
And that would keep it sub, sub 3,000 in relationship to that total application fee, because other portions of that could go to facility cost and administration.
So the suggestion right now would be legal at 2,000, upping it, asking for the additional 2,000? And then on the advertising, how much shortage are we going to have there, do you think?
We estimated about 150 earlier in the conversation.
That's not much money.
So it'd be less than what the application fee would be.
I'd say, let's take that to 300, just to give them some flexibility, and that would be my suggestion. Can our budget sustain that, Mr. Vice President?
300 for advertisement?
And the legal? Is there enough on our legal line for that?
So you're looking at 2,000?
2,300.
300.
Yeah, we have $978 or something like that. Let me get the numbers for you.
Yeah, I can't, I can't commit to any more than what we've got on the line at this moment. We would have to do an additional
If you've got the $900 within the advertising section to it, that should be more than sufficient.
We have a
Counsel, we don't have any number in there. Printing and advertisement BZA, we have a balance of $938.71.
All right. Madam Auditor, would I be permitted to order one of these bills paid out of the council legal line?
You can pay, you have it in your line item to do that. If you're approving the advertisement, then you would sign the claim to pay for that out of council's budget, yes?
Okay.
As long as the funding's there.
So the line item that says council legal, not specifically for BZA but for council legal, could I pay it off that line?
You could, yes.
All right, so we do have, we do have the funds available then, so, okay.
So 2,300?
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. We're talking what? We're talking 2,000 in the legal and then an additional 300 for the advertising?
If that's your motion, I think
Well, that's what you said would work for you, correct?
We could sustain that.
Can I ask clarification on that? So the 2,000, is that being transferred or approved to be used through the council?
So you would have the ability to spend your 1,300 blah, blah, blah that you have existing on your line?
Right, we already have that.
Up to an additional $2,000 from the council.
Okay.
Additional 2,000, though, would have to go to Jesse to
I would have to sign off on that.
We do not have in the budget status report any money for legal services BZA, so I'm a little unclear, so where are you going to get it?
I would pay that out of the council legal line.
Because that application fee rolled into the general fund, right?
Correct.
So
All of our fees go to the general.
We may, we may need to do some additionals or transfers later in the year, but this allows them to do what they need to do, so. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion by Mr. Masterson and a second by Mr. Folsditch to allow Mr. Adley to spend up to $300 for legal and up to an additional $2,000 above his existing budget for, for legal, for advertising on the first item and legal on the second.
Right.
All right. I hate to say it, but is there a debate?
I would just like to say that before this comes up again, I would like clarification on those dollar amounts for what anybody would be willing to pay, what their cap would be. Because I'm guessing that this is going to come before us again, and if we don't have the money in our line items or where we're going to do it, I'd like to know what's going to happen.
All right. Anything else from the council? Hearing none. Because of the controversial nature of this vote, Madam Auditor, I'm going to request a roll call vote and allow members to explain their votes before they cast them.
Folsditch?
Yes.
Due to legal obligations?
I would say two, due to the legal obligations, and it's under the cap of what they've paid in for it, yes.
Harmon?
No.
Bohannon?
I wish that I could vote no. I believe we're legally obligated to do this, and so I vote yes.
Johnson?
Due to legal obligation, yes.
Cox?
No.
Masterson?
Yes. I believe we have a legal obligation there. I believe we need to give the authority to the bodies that are doing that, and hopefully things will work out, and I know that this is a first for them, too. I wouldn't want to be in the same position those people have been in, but I appreciate what they're doing.
All right. So the vote stands at five to two. The motion is agreed to. I'll just let the public know that the next step in this process is going to be at the Board of Zoning Appeals, and it's important, whether you are for this project or against it, to let those folks know what you think. I certainly will be there as a member of the public, expressing my concerns about it.
Mr. President, may I ask you a quick question while I have the collective here? A few weeks ago, we met with Council Lovett and Mr. Masterson, as well as the additional council with commissioners. Mr. Lovett made comment about wanting or encouraging me to come before you to talk about and get an additional funding for professional services to bring in individuals for the Battery Task Force. Is there a number that council would be comfortable with in a future request?
I encourage this conversation, but I don't think it's on the agenda for today, so we'd have to do that in two weeks.
It's not on the agenda for tonight. I would, I would welcome you to request the auditor to add that to our October agenda.
Okay.
Yep.
Since I had you here.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to talk about stuff that's not on the agenda, but is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I've got, I've got a motion by Mr. Folsditch. Is that a second for Mrs. Cox? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, and we are adjourned.